Welcome to this regular school committee meeting of Thursday, December 13th, 2018. Joining us today, we have our AEA representative, Jason Levy. Welcome. I guess we don't have our student representative today. Dr. Seuss will not be here because of the family, family health issues and Mr. Thielman will be late because of family issues also. And with this, we're going to begin with Mr. Gilbert. You want to come up? Mr. Gilbert is the outgoing MASC field director who has been working with us all year for the past year and a half, two years, on updating our school policy manual. And with that, I'll bring it over to you.
So I would say to you that we have completed the policy manual. Mr. Schlickman, I believe, sent you all links to the edits that were done. He instructed you to send any questions to me. I got no questions.
Hooray.
So I'm going to assume that we're ready to move forward with the next step, which is putting your manual online.
First of all, Mr. Gilbert, I want to congratulate you on your pending retirement. You've done a really great job for us. And as a past sort of employer, as an MASC president in 2004, which was a dog's age ago, I really came to value your expertise and your friendship. And I'm so happy that you've been our field rep. And we are going to miss you. You've done great work for us and be committed for your service to the association. So I wonder, given this job title of field rep, I mean, what does that do? Do you place cows strategically? But, yeah. So would you explain to us what the next steps are? We vote to approve the new manual and then what's going to happen in terms of publication?
Sure. So what will happen now is you will take a vote to approve the manual in the shape that it is now. We will then add the adoption date, tonight, I assume, to the introduction to that manual. We will then deliver to you a paper copy, which is your permanent public record, and a copy of the manual on a flash drive in Microsoft Word. We will then take those Word files. We will send them to our third-party hosting service. They will load them up onto, into their database. That will take roughly, probably two to four weeks. It could take up to a couple of months, depends on how busy they are. But generally lately, they've been turning them around in three or four weeks. And then we will provide you with a link that you can put on your website and that will open to the policy, to the online version of the policy manual. From the point you approve the manual, after that, if you make any policy changes, you send a Word file for the policy change to us and we will load it up. It generally is loaded within 24 hours.
Excellent.
So that will maintain your online policy manual as well.
Okay. Now, I've stressed before that what this is, is a recodification of our present manual. We've made a couple of changes that we brought forward before, which was in terms of adopting things that were missing that needed to be there. So they've gone through a couple of reads. So what I'd like to do is, with the understanding that anything in the new version of the manual that we adopt now is subject for the usual policy work that we would want to do. So if there's something in there that we're not happy with, it's the same thing as we had before and we can go in there and make changes as appropriate. And I'm sure that with new regulations coming from the state and whatever legislation is going to be coming down, we're going to need to do this as a matter of course, anyway. So for that purpose, I'd like to move adoption of the recodified revised policy manual.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Anyone? You want to speak to your second?
To Mike.
Do you want to? You get to speak next, if you...
Thank you. I want to thank Mike. Mike has been very good. As we were going through it bit by piece, he would answer all the questions, serious ones, the ones that I thought were very serious and quickly learned that they weren't as serious as I thought. And wealth of knowledge. Those things he wasn't able to respond to immediately. He got back to us as soon as we could. So it was a very efficient process, even though it took us a while to get through that tomb. So thank you very much. You're welcome.
Just a question. Jeff is not here tonight, or not here yet. But we had separately presented the online fundraising policy, which is in that set.
Yeah.
And he had asked, I think, you to review it with your team and possibly with the other council, but I don't know if, I don't recall exactly what he was looking for, so.
We have not discussed it yet.
Just a point to make, Lynn, that that particular policy was reviewed not only by our legal counsel, but also by the general counsel of the Ethics Commission.
Yeah.
And the Ethics Commission did make some changes to it. So, you know, it's been, certainly had a extensive legal review.
Okay. Please.
When it goes to the third party, I sort of assumed that we would take the Word file and make it a PDF. Will it be searchable?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes. Word and phrase searchable. Also, all of the cross-references will be hyperlinked and all of the legal references will be hyperlinked.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trying to find, I had one policy I wanted to kick back to be reviewed by policy and I can't find the name of it. It's the one that deals with approval of private schools. And it had come up earlier this year, not, which I was asking, which one was it? It's LBC.
Yeah, I was going to say it's ANL.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, when I was having to deal with it earlier, it never came to the level of full school committee, but it became apparent that our policy is missing a lot of the specifics about when things need to happen and there's work that we need to be doing.
So that's because the specifics are actually in a guidance memo from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That is available on the department's website. It is process, not policy. And so the policy basically says that you need to follow that process.
We need to be doing things. And what my concern was that I felt that it would be better if the policy spelled out what we were doing across the board so that all schools knew that we were being, that we were treating them equally. And we need to come up with this, we have to, we actually have to approve, go through approval process for private schools in town. And we have to re-up the approvals. And...
Excuse me. No, you do not have to re-up the approvals.
That wasn't...
Only approved once.
No, that wasn't what I read on the, in the memo on the DESI website, is it said that we needed to do it more than once.
No, they're only done once.
Again, that wasn't what...
Having been this, through this process multiple times as a school committee member in my, in two different communities, you, when a new private school is established, you have to review and approve that private school, that they meet local standards. You do it once, as long as that school is in existence. That's it.
I had gone through, I talked with council. He agreed that we did actually have a duty to reexamine on, it says on a regular basis. I don't remember.
I'm not aware of that guidance from the department.
That's, school committee is required. Anyway, I wanted to, I was concerned that our policy didn't address all of the things. You're saying that it's not something that has to be in policy, that it's in DESI. I would like, I would like policy to talk about that one and figure out what we should be doing. I had multiple exchanges with our town council. He did feel that we had current duties to do, not just, it wasn't just a one and done. And I was acting on...
I would urge you to have that conversation with a school lawyer rather than town council.
I feel town council is well-versed in both school and county.
Our town council is a former school lawyer for Boston School Department.
Right. So I took what he was saying as a reasonable statement. So I am asking that LBC be brought to policy for discussion, please. Mr. Schlickman?
I'd be happy to have the policy brought to the subcommittee and have a conversation with town council. That said, there's a philosophical discussion that we've had going through the policy manual revision, that things that are law and things that are regulation, we don't want to inscribe in the policy, that we want to go and reference it out. Because if the regulation or statute changes, then our policy is in conflict. And so that consistently throughout the revision process, we removed language that quoted either current or past regulations.
If I may, policy is supposed to be what and why, not how, when, and where. Unless a regulation or law requires you to say how, when, and where, that the how, when, and where belongs to administration. And ultimately, in this case, I would say in LBC, that your administrators do the work to get you to a recommendation to approve or disapprove of private schools.
Right.
I mean, it's something we want to put in a calendar of things that we want to look at on an annual basis. That would be an appropriate thing to do. But to inscribe that in policy, that's not what we, we're trying to avoid that, that tripping over that. But I'd love to have council and discuss this further.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
Can I move on to a different one? Is that okay? Are we done? So for ADF, which is the new wellness policy, in committee, we added a temperature for recess. But when I look in Section A of what we're supposed to approve, there's, that sentence isn't there. So I have the notes from the meeting that Paul sent out saying, we're going to add a sentence saying, outdoor recess should be provided for students at times when it is not precipitating and the wind chill is above 20 degrees Fahrenheit, past three zero in committee, but didn't make it to PDF.
That's sort of why we ask people to contact Mike off-line.
Yep. Which I didn't do.
If you would forward me those, if you'd just forward me those notes, I'll make sure that gets done before it goes to our third party.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further comments, questions? Okay. All in favor of approving our new codification of the policy manual?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay. That's unanimous. Thank you very much again for your work.
You're welcome. I appreciate it. If I might just, this is my last policy meeting as a, as a field director for MASC. It sort of closes a loop for me. As some of you know, my mother was a 1940 graduate of Arlington High School. And I spent my youth playing up in the heights. So it is fitting for me, I think, to be here tonight, doing my last policy work for the association. I've appreciated your input over the years and I thank you for your service to the kids of Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Good night.
Have a wonderful retirement. Yes, enjoy. I'm there in South Arlington.
Thank you.
Okay. So, moving on, do we have any public participation? No? Okay. Then we move on to the budget needs requests. The principals from the Audison, the high school, and the Gibbs. Want to come up to the...
Hi. Wendy Salvatore is here tonight. Salvatore is the assistant principal at Gibbs. There was, Ms. Francisco, who is the principal, had a conflict this evening. But I can assure you that we've all been working very collaboratively on all of this.
Yes. Do you all have a copy of what Kristen and I put together?
Mm-hmm.
So yes, I'm happy to be here to represent Kristen and myself. We would like to first begin by saying thank you for your support that you gave us last year so that we could launch our school, which includes an embedded social-emotional program and acknowledges the developmental changes that sixth graders are experiencing at this time in their education. In our first year at Gibbs, we were able to support five learning communities. And in those learning communities, we included math, science, ancient civilization, and English teachers. And in an effort to build a strong connection amongst our teachers, we also attached our exploratory teachers to those learning communities. And it has been very effective in creating a nice culture for our teachers. It has also made a big difference for our teachers so that they can develop relationships with students. We are able to now provide some small advisory groups. We have 35 small advisory groups that meet four times in a six-day cycle. The staffing that you supported last year will sustain us for the 2020 budget. We are supported, we were supported to create a schedule that is planting the seeds for project-based learning, co-teaching, cultural proficiency, and a robust programming around social-emotional learning. Our numbers will increase somewhat next year, but not so much that our staffing for daily operations need to change drastically. The priorities that you will hear from us tonight are for the 2020 and then beginning our steps for our five-year plan. Our first requests relate directly to our staffing. First, we want to make sure that we are creating appropriate programming for our special education students that need substantially separate learning environments. To do so, we need to build our staffing out further to support our small group classes as the population of our students at Gibbs will change from year to year. This would involve adding a 1.0 FTE for special education to keep the groups of students as small as they have to be in order to meet state requirements. There should be eight students if we do not have a TA, 12 students if we have a TA in those small group classes. As well as we will be able to create cohorts that will be based on students' academic and social-emotional needs. This additional staff add would accomplish this for us next year. In addition, we are currently staffed with a .4 FTE for speech and language. The current allocation has been difficult for us to schedule with the students on all of their needs on their IEPs. Based on our numbers alone, we would like to ask for a .2 to be added to the .4, making the speech and language a .6 FTE. The second staffing that we would need are in our areas of physical education, art, technology, DML, and world language. Currently, these classes are longer, are larger than we would like them to. There is a combination of number of staff and schedule constraints that have caused some of our classes to be unbalanced when our students are learning outside of their learning communities. In time, we will have a better understanding of exact numbers for next year. But this would involve adding a .2 PE teacher, as well as an increase in our world language staff. And we would have that data when we do our course selections later in the winter. This year, the math department shifted to ask for each math teacher to take on an additional class intervention for their learning communities. This means that these teachers do not teach a project block. This shift helped us launch the first year at Gibbs, and we would like to bring back the original model and add a 1.0 to our math department with a math interventionist. This will also allow for co-teaching in small group classes. It will increase our ability to deliver Tier Two instruction and consistently allow math teachers to teach project block. Finally, we're looking for an increase in our medical needs at the Gibbs. Sue Frankie has been very careful to make sure that we are mindful of this higher medical need for the students as they move to Gibbs. It will be difficult for one nurse to maintain the daily medical care based on the data that we have for kids coming in next year. In addition, the nurse is an integral part of our social-emotional wellness program. She has moved to the Gibbs from Hardy for this purpose, as her work there produced the lowest number of visits related to anxiety over at the Hardy School. This decrease in number was directly impacted by her involvement in our social-emotional and mindfulness program. This increase would provide time for this important work to happen, and we're looking for a .5 in our nursing. Our non-staffing priorities. First, we would like to be able to build the professional development around the programming that we've started for our sixth graders. In order for this programming to be successful, we will be building professional development in the areas of project-based learning, co-teaching, and sustaining our social-emotional learning programming that we have already launched this year. While we have not selected specific programs, we support the special education request for funding to provide onsite coaching through a district-wide consult, consultant, I'm sorry, to general education and special education teams as we begin to develop a common practice for our teachers in our co-taught classes that is grounded in evidence and research-based practices. In order to support our project-based learning initiative, we would like to be able to provide classroom coverage so that teachers can go to other buildings and visit other schools that have very successful PBL. Upon their return, they would be able to staff some workshops. This is an area in which the district is trying to grow. Even in our infant stages, we were selected by the Maple, it's the Massachusetts Consortium for Personalized Learning. So the Audison has been chosen by Maple as a school to represent, or to present, I'm sorry, our planning around our launching of PBL. One of our projects for this first trimester was chosen, I believe it was a music project that Mr. Hamm did with his students. So those students will be talking about their experiences and presenting their projects at the Maple Conference in January. We will also be hosting a school walkthrough in April so that people can come in during our project block time and observe what our kids are doing during project block. This is exciting for us and the district. This funding will help us continue moving forward with this initiative. And finally, to sustain our foundation for responsive classroom and social-emotional learning, we want to continue to have training in summer around our work. This number would depend on number of new staff and the number of teachers that would be eligible for advanced training. Thank you for having me tonight. It is important that Kristen and I know, it's important for Kristen and I to let you know that the Gibbs has been a great place. We've had a great launch. We are thankful that the school committee has supported us and that the district has supported us in our mission that we have done over there. We want you to know that the parents have been overwhelmingly positive with their sixth graders' experience. Students are happy to come to school. Teachers are working very hard to keep all of our new initiatives afloat. As we move forward and begin our work next year to launch our five-year strategic plan, we look forward to strengthening the programming that I have mentioned this evening, as well as doing vertical alignment with the Audison so that we can provide consistent middle school experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayner?
Hi.
Hi. Can you tell me, what's the total amount of staff, new staff that you want? Number?
2.9.
Okay. Call it three, then.
Okay. Let's call them three.
And do you know offhand approximately how much money it would be for the PD that you're asking for, the additional PD?
That is a great question, and I will go back and ask Kristen what her magic number might be.
Okay. I think that's important for us to be, unless you have that.
Well, responsive classroom is $20,000 for a week.
But I heard that, but I heard a couple of...
The other would be a consult, that would, would depend, it would be on a continuum. It depends on how mu, how much time we have. This would be on a consult basis. If we had somebody as an employee, we probably would want somebody less than .5.
We're going to need something concrete to put in the budget, so I'd like that going forward.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that 3.0?
3.0.
Right.
It was a 1 for special ed, a 1 for math, a .2.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carden?
Thank you. So a few comments and questions mixed in. First, you know, Gibbs was robustly staffed compared to Audison this year, partly mainly because we went with five clusters, teachers only teaching four classes there a day, core classes a day. So I think when we balance between schools, and as an administrative team, as you balance between schools, we need to really think about whether these priorities are, in fact, equal to the other priorities that the other schools have. We need to strike that balance, given the way that we open Gibbs. So specific questions on special education, my understanding was that we had a relatively high ratio of special ed teachers at the Gibbs as compared to the Audison. So I would like to see that data provided, you know, how many, how many special ed teachers per grade level?
I think the issue, the request is for the sub-separate programming. Given that we've lost the economies of scale and having three grades in which we can create programming and having a single grade and having those numbers fluctuate, what we had to do for this past school year was look at the incoming students and create programming specifically for those students rather than having existing programming. So if five students came in who needed the programming for, who had come from, say, the Dallin program, next year, those numbers coming out of Stratton may be different. And we know that we're not going to create a program that lumps all students together. So that's students who need small group instruction because of their academic needs versus social-emotional needs. And so what we've had trouble doing this year is to create that balance of creating substantially separate classes that meet the needs of students, whether it be for academic purposes or for social-emotional purposes. And so one of the issues with going from three grades to one is losing that flexibility that having that has allowed us. So what is the additional information you're requesting?
So the number of special ed teachers by grade level at each building?
Mm-hmm.
And whether they're in special, in sub-separate programs or...
Right. I just don't think that'll capture the, yeah, the sheer numbers won't be captured.
Well, I mean, if there's a total number of seven special ed teachers at the sixth grade and 12 at the seventh and eighth grade, that might be okay. But if it's a bigger imbalance, which it was, which I think it is this year, then adding an additional teacher at one school, you know, may not be, that school may not be their priority.
Yeah. And I think as we hear at the other requests for what Audison also has for requests, there's going to be some special ed programming requests as well.
So we don't, we don't have that data because John was never able to break out the Gibbs from the Audison. So we just need that provided separately.
Okay.
On the math intervention, the same question, my, I don't know how they do it at Audison, but my understanding is it's one math interventionist that does two grades. So do you really need a full-time person or would a half-time person be, be equal to what they're doing at the Audison?
I can certainly ask Matt Coleman. This was a, you know, request that Kristen met with the department heads and spoke with Matt Coleman about.
Okay.
I know when I was at the Audison, there was a math interventionist for the sixth grade, for the seventh grade, and for the eighth grade. So maybe they've gone to one for both grades. I'm not positive.
Okay. And then the nurse, this would be the only school with, you know, 500 kids that has two nurses. So there may be some unique need there because it's a sixth-grade school or something. But I would definitely think that this would be a good situation to look for a nursing assistant because you already have a full-time nurse there all day. So why not look at a nursing assistant half-time rather than a nurse?
I can certainly...
Let me answer that question. This is specific.
Sure.
Specific needs is coming from the fifth, fifth grade cohort.
Okay.
Great. And I was going to say, I can certainly refer back to Sue Frankie to find more information because I know that was a request that came from her.
Yeah. I mean, that's still, it's still a valid question, though. I mean, depending on what the specific needs are, you know, they do have training to deal with specific students. So it would be worth looking into.
We have, but we can, we can definitely talk a little bit more about that. But we do have an unusual cohort of specific needs. Now, will that kind of staffing be required in the following year? Perhaps not.
But it would follow the cohort, probably.
Probably follow the cohort.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Just to follow, so is, but is that, that cohort must have some special staffing presently? I mean, they're, they're fifth graders, so they're already in our system.
Yes.
So I would imagine we, like, how, I guess what I'm, I, I like nursing, so I think they're important and I think, you know, but I, I just, I don't, I guess what I don't understand is I get we're moving a cohort of kids from fifth grade to sixth grade, but then I'm like, well, so how are we meeting their needs?
Well, they're in seven elementary schools right now.
Okay. I see. So the aggregate need in that cohort is significant?
Yes.
And it's being sort of barely met?
So not barely met.
But like adequately met by our, like, extremely capable nurses across our seven schools, but once they come together, they provide us. Okay.
Mr. Hayner?
I have a question for the superintendent. We've separated Gibbs and Audison and Arlington High School. Are we to assume that next week we'll have seven different presentations from the elementary?
No. There've been...
Because I'm really concerned that Gibbs is now going to be treated as a separate entity. My under... entity. My understanding was we, and maybe it was just by naitye, that we had a high school and a middle school. The middle school was gonna be located in two areas. And we've always treated the middle school as three classes. Now we're treating it as one and two. And I'm concerned about that because of just the things we've just been talking about.
I think that going forward next year, if you want the two to be presented as a middle school, there's still going to be unique needs to Gibbs than there might be from, from Audison.
I guess my feeling is if they're unique, and I'm not questioning, it may be a hundred percent valid, but might there not be unique concerns in each other's, of the schools? We have different programs in the other schools as well, and, but we are presented that way. I, because it's just one year, and it can be in isolation, I was hoping that we could find more similarities between the two buildings than differences. And I, I'm just concerned that this is just gonna add one more. I think the planning and the organization should be done. I think it should be done together. I know all the elementary principals are getting together to prepare their program. I'm not trying to be in contention with you. I'm just trying to understand it. I'd rather have unity rather than separation.
Well, there'd be, there is unity. Let me take, for example, elementary last year, not, there was more of a need at Thompson to have a second social worker. We don't have two social workers that are non-programmed social workers in the other elementary schools. I think there are sometimes unique differences, even in our elementary level. That's certainly true with Audison and Gibbs. I think next year, if the school committee wants to hear, you know, and, and I don't know if you wanna come join Wendy at the table. We certainly can do that, but there are, there are differences, as you will hear tonight, that are different needs at the two schools. So whether you hear them separately or you hear them as like one joint, it's the, the issues.
I may not be expressing it.
Okay.
Each building has its own population. Each building would, these needs are reflected in their population, but they vary. The cohorts that we're just talking about are going to go up through this thing and disappear. I do not assume that any social worker or person that you get as a result of a cohort, I would love to see them go up to the, your building, and then if they graduate from there, go up to the high school and rotate through the program. But that isn't what's historically happened. They usually stay. They find a home. And we built, we don't separate.
Mr. Schuckman?
Mr. Hayner's raising an excellent point, and that the way we've done this historically has been we have an elementary presentation, a middle presentation, and a high school presentation. So the, the seven elementary principals come together and present a unified vision of what K to five is gonna look like, and that there's some discussion among them about how they're gonna make a consistent presentation to us about the needs at the elementary level. To have the Audison and the Gibbs present separately, you're, you're breaking that up. And if we're going to be consistent in the way we do business in grade six, seven, and eight, and fiscally consistent in terms of the, the quality and level of services and the needs we're making, that going forward in the future, that we should have one middle school presentation that is a unified presentation from both Audison and Gibbs that presents us with a package of what the vision is and what the needs are and what a request would be equitably through those three grades to, to provide a quality experience.
Dr. Bodie, can I chime in?
Sure.
I, I think some of it is a product of having a first-year principal myself and opening another building. And I would have loved to have met with Kristen and come up with, you know, one plan to give together. I think part of that is just we're kind of getting up to speed. She's opening a new building. It's my first time in Arlington, first time as a building principal. And I think for actually this, looking at the individual budget needs of the school this year, it was easier for us to kind of look at our buildings and not necessarily had the time to get together and over, you know, look together as a budget. My hope is that in years to come, Kristen and I will be merging, you know, and having more of a one-middle-school experience, two buildings. You know, it is something that I can see that the public of Arlington would want, the, how the school committee would want it. I think in doing this process right now, Kristen and I know our buildings better, and we're just trying to kind of get up to speed in our learning curves and trying to present what we think we need as a budget. I think hopefully, you know, as we kind of get more settled and understand the needs of each other's buildings and we have more discussions, I think that next year will come and we'll have one middle school presentations. But I did think it was, you know, from a purely selfish reason, it was easier just to kind of look at my building without having to go also and meet with Kristen and have a complete understanding of what she needed as well. So I think some of it this year is just a, a matter of time and two building principals who are learning their buildings and trying to settle.
Okay. I think we've had enough on this, on separating the-
Just real quick. Thank you. I appreciate that. It helps me, it makes me feel good about it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Different topic?
Just that it's like, unfortunately, we're not gonna, we, we're not gonna be able to fund all of these, like, reasonable and totally legitimate requests. So I think, I don't even know that the conversation in terms of talking about it jointly even, has to be over even for this year. Like, I don't think we've reached, I don't think this presentation is necessarily like a full stop of like, okay, we're doing it separately for this year. You know, having that conversation, because we're gonna be talking about this for the next, like, months and months as, as we, you know, pull all these things together. And, I mean, it would be great if we could say, oh, we're gonna do all of this stuff. It looks great, but-
No, we'd love that too.
I know, wouldn't that be great?
Folks?
So, anyway, but thank you.
We're getting derailed here, right? This is whether we have them together or-
I'm done. You can keep going. Go ahead.
I know. I'm just, we're, we're done with this topic. Okay. Okay. I think, is there any other questions about the Gibbs? Okay, seen none. Moving on, can we have the Audison?
Yeah. But before we do that, can I introduce some of the people that are here too that are available for questions? Some of our curriculum leaders could not come for a variety of different reasons, but I think it's important people know. Larry Weathers, who is the director of science. Denny Coughlin, history, social studies. Sitting, right next to Coughlin is Rochelle Robina, who is the new assistant principal at Audison. Behind her is Bill Papazis, who is the director of performing arts. And of course, you know, will be on very soon matching- All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. So, I'm good. Thanks. Thanks. So first of all, thank you for having me tonight to be able to explain what I think are the budgetary needs of the Audison Middle School. I'd also like to thank Dr. Bodie, Dr. McNeil, and Mr. Spiegel for all their help so far at the Audison with me coming in on my first three months of being in charge. So the, my most important priority over anything right now is small class sizes. So I worry that many of the classes next year at the Audison, at our current staffing level, will be over 25. I believe that I really wanna keep those classes under 25. I think having the relatively smaller classes will help us for, form relationships between students and teachers. I think it has kids participate more. I think there's more of a chance that we catch the kids who might fall through the cracks. From a teacher's perspective, I think it's important for them not to have to worry about behavioral management strategies, but just have time to teach. And they're also given more time to give individual feedback. So what I'm gonna present to you right now is a different list of things that I think the Audison needs, but is primarily focused on class-sized numbers. At the middle school, both at the Gibbs and at the Audison, we work in teams of teachers, being English, math, science, and social studies. Currently, right now, we have four teams in seventh grade, three and a half in eighth grade. We're looking to expand the eighth grade to four teams, so adding two full-time teachers. If, at a current staffing level, we would have over 25 students in every eighth grade math, science, social studies, and English class, and I really feel that's important to really get the kids prepared for high school and that we need to have those smaller classes. I'm also looking hopefully to add a school counselor. Right now, the school counselor caseload is about 287 students. We're seeing an uptick in all sorts of social-emotional issues, not only in Arlington, but I think across the Commonwealth and, and in the other states as well. We're looking to add a counselor that would reduce the caseload to hopefully about 225, 230 students. Otherwise, we'll be over about 300 students, which I understand is a contractual issue for our school counselors to have that many students on their caseload. I am looking for a 1.0 world language teacher that would be divided into 0.6 of a Spanish teacher and 0.4 of a French teacher. Currently, right now, if we don't have an increase in world language, our eighth grade Spanish classes will average 31 students. Our seventh grade Spanish classes will average 26 students, and our French classes will average 28 students next year. Obviously, in a foreign language where you want kids to participate, you want them to speak in their target language, I just think these classes unfortunately are just too big for our seventh and eighth grade students. We're looking to add a 0.6 PE teacher right now. Our current PE classes are 25 per class. Next year, they would go up to 27. We also have 34 sections of PE compared to 40 sections of art, technology, and facts. It's a lot easier when those non-team times all have the same number of sections for schedules. It leads to a more balanced schedule. You see a lot more variety of class sizes when you don't have the similar amount of sections. We're also looking for a 0.4 music teacher. 0.1 would be an orchestra teacher that we currently have. I don't know if any of you were lucky enough to go to the concert on Tuesday. The orchestra was fantastic. There is currently 77 members of the orchestra, which is combined seventh and eighth grade. Next year, I think largely due in part to Jing Wei, who is our orchestra teacher, the orchestra would be over 105 kids. It's a big space to find a place to have 105, 106 orchestra students. I also feel that in Arlington, the music program has also been, you know, a, a source of pride, especially at the middle school level, and I would like to be able to have a seventh grade and an eighth grade orchestra. The other 0.3 would be for music teacher. Our classes are getting not over the 25-person threshold, but they're getting to be about 24. It would also allow us to do a better job of scheduling. I did put down a 0.1 administrative assistant. Right now, we have 860 students. We're adding 46 students next year, so if you do the math, you have one secretary for every 358 students. We have 46 more. We would keep at that same level if we were able to get a 0.1 administrative assistant. For some of our special education needs, I know we had talked a little bit briefly with the Gibbs, we are looking for a sub-separate program for our summit program, so we're looking to add a full-time teacher to the summit program. I know Mrs. Elmer could probably tell you a little bit more about the importance of the summer, the summit program at the middle school. We are also looking for some of our current TAs to move up to B, BSPs. Our TAs, you know, unfortunately do not make a lot of money. A lot of them are people who are looking to go into the teaching profession, so it's one year. There are other people who have as TAs who also look elsewhere because that's kind of what they, they wanna do for their career, and I worry about losing some of that excellent support. The last personnel would be a 1.0. We're trying to switch to more of a co-teaching model. We're having more seventh graders move into eighth grade. The classes are getting larger, and we're looking to expand the co-teaching model, and we're looking to add a special educator at the eighth grade level. I do have some just really quick supply requests. Denny could probably tell you this a little bit better. I do have a background as a social studies teacher, and Mr. Levy is also well-versed in this, so I'm sure he could answer any of your questions as well. But the eighth grade across the state is going to a more civics-based class, and that means that we have to change our curriculum. So that's gonna mean new textbooks, new teachers' editions, new supplements, new digital access. We're also looking as the seventh grade is also switching a little bit of their curriculum, and we're looking for some textbooks as well. I think that Larry could talk to you probably about the, the new science initiative that was a few years ago and the new standards. We are switching over our different sixth, seventh, and eighth grade curriculum as well, and that's costing us obviously textbooks and materials. So unfortunately, many of the supplies we've had have been a result of things outside of Arlington changing our curriculum. And the last thing is, and Bill could, I think would be happy to answer any of your questions, that we need new coral risers because they're in tough shape. So that's kind of my detailed list. I'd love to take any questions that you have.
Ms. Morgan?
So I had two questions. One, we can, so the, the science resources, it looks like last year, so this was obviously not you, but just your predecessor.
Yeah.
It looks, sounds like Dr. Woods came to us for FY19, asking for science and guidance, curriculum materials, and we didn't fund it because we couldn't. So is this the same thing, do you think?
So I'm gonna have Larry, who's a little bit more, probably has a little bit more of the history, if he wants to join us. I'm putting him on the spot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
And then I had one more other quick.
Well, last year, the sixth grade was at Audison. And so we, we began our six, seven, eight rollout last year. And, and those purchases last year at the Audison were for the sixth grade, and those went over to the Gibbs.
Just the list that I was looking at from FY19 was, it was a red item, which means we didn't fund it at all. But maybe we did somehow. Okay.
Yeah, I think we, we were able to fund sixth-grade textbooks.
Okay.
And then there was a little bit of extra for some seventh-grade textbooks, but we're filling that in this year.
And so this is the residual, the 42 whatever is the three-year rollout?
And the request for this coming fiscal year is for the eighth grade. So then we will have the whole program. And, and for each of those years, what we have done is we've had a introductory year where the teachers get a classroom set of textbooks, and they can explore, learn a little bit more about the new program with the idea that the following year, everybody does it, and they do all of it.
Okay.
So this year, the seventh grade is currently exploring, and next year, the eighth grader will explore, and the year following each of those will be the full implementation.
So this current set of seventh graders explored last year in sixth grade and are exploring now in seventh grade and are exploring again in eighth grade?
No, almost.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I wasn't clear enough. Because of the, the impending move of going from the Audison to the sixth grade, there just wasn't the capacity for those sixth-grade teachers last year to explore with the kids.
Got it.
We had PD, they, we had a number of PD sessions. Teachers looked through materials, but they didn't actually implement any of the lessons.
Okay.
This year, we are having the seventh grade teachers do that with some of the, using some of the resources.
Got it. But those same current seventh graders will go into eighth grade and-
That's correct.
In a sort of, like, got it.
This is a set of resources that are geared specifically to the Massachusetts standards. And, and so it has, it has all of what the Mass frameworks has in the correct sequence. And so that's why we wanted to, it's, it's a little harder to get PD for that because the, the publishers don't, they're, they're not quite set up. They're set up for national stuff, but they're, but they're doing this for us. Yesterday, they flew somebody from Florida for a PD we were doing for our seventh grade and eighth grade teachers. So they're supporting us quite well.
Good. And then the other question I had, is that okay? Can I do my other one? So I see, can you speak to us, and again, this was the request from, this is for you, yes. So this was the request from Dr. Woods from last year that- So this was the request from Dr. Woods from last year, that she came asking for a 1.5 social worker at the Audison, which we didn't fund.
Yeah.
You can see the theme, right?
Right.
And so now you're coming, asking us for a 1.0 school counselor?
Correct.
And I'm just curious, like, they sound kind of like they, like, can you talk to us about, like, why is your flag, like, planted on school counselor versus social worker? I'm just, I'm curious.
Sure, sure. So currently, right now, we have seven and a half clusters, and we have three school counselors. All three of them have a social work background, and so right now, it's a little bit difficult for communication. So we divide them up alphabetically right now. And so what happens is you have, for example, Brian Christie is one of our counselors, and he's going to have kids in all seven and a half clusters. What I'm hoping next year is that we would have two counselors in seventh grade and two in eighth grade. And so I think the two counselors that work together with the four teams in seventh grade and the two counselors that would work together with the eighth grade, I think would help communication. I think they would be, you know, more active with the teams. I think right now, with 287 students per caseload, trying to navigate seven and a half clusters, I just don't think it's necessarily a good organizational structure. And I look at their background with social work, and I just believe that if we had two school counselors per grade, the communication would be better with the teachers, and I think it would also be better between counselors. So I look at our setup, which to me, with kind of the, you know, I call it the alphabet soup, is a little bit more of a high school model, and I'm trying to have a little bit more of a middle school model. So for me, really, to have two counselors per grade, I think would be more efficient.
And you're just noting, you're just noting a nomenclature change because school counselors, in general, we have moved from guidance counselor to, as a state, referring to them as school counselors versus school social workers, guidance counselors, whatnot. School counselors is a more encompassing term.
So maybe it's all the same app, just with different, like, names?
Yeah.
And how many school counselors are there at two? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So we have, we have three. There's two at Gibbs, and then we do have, in special education, we have two other social workers, but they mostly, their focus is on kids who have IEPs and have it, you know, in their IEPs.
Super, thank you.
Mr. Haner?
Are we eventually going to electronic books across the board?
I don't know. I am going to take a little bit of the expertise of the curriculum leaders for that, so, you know, I look at, I look at the math in the social studies and science depending on, you know, kind of what they believe is best for kids, you know. I was a social studies teacher, I definitely have some strong opinions on, you know, digital textbooks for social studies.
My concern is, math doesn't change necessarily year to year. Science changes six months before the book gets published.
Right.
Social studies depends who's writing what, where, and when.
Yeah.
Things of that nature, and there's an economic value and a loss value.
Right, right.
On it, so I'm just asking.
No, no, I agree. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bill, I can just add a little bit to that.
Oh, you need to come to the mic.
I'm sorry?
You gotta come to the mic.
Our new science series is a digital text. We get a paper text as well, but every student will then, when we're done rolling this out, will have a digital text, and it, I've been more and more in awe of it. Stuff that we saw yesterday, it had five different reading levels for the click of a button. You can, if a student isn't reading it well, it can go down a step or up a step. There are 20 languages that the glossaries come in, and that's a click of a button, and any student can access that, and many, many more things. The book can be read to students, for students who have reading problems or auditory problems. So we are going that way. It's still a stretch. We're not going exclusively that way because the publishers have their own plan for this, and to get the paper text along with the digital text is just dollars more, so you might as well get them both, so.
We also have to think about equity and kids being able to access the content at home, so going purely electronic would phase out some students and limit their access to the curriculum and the resources. So we have to keep that in mind as we think about the electronic piece of this.
I think that piece, though, the foreign languages, helps to fray some of the cost because our requirement to translate into the books is horrendous as well. That goes both ways. Thank you.
Mr. Schwenk?
No, I think the second language learner component is something that's really important in terms of the digital text and the fact that you can have an embedded glossary that you click through and pull things up. I mean, you know, kids traditionally get stuck in that middle level in the continuum of moving into English proficiency, and so when they're struggling to get past the social language to get into the academic language, needs that aren't entirely visible because they're conversant and speak with a fairly standard New England accent, doesn't mean that they have the comprehension of a native English speaker who's been brought through the language, and the digital textbooks do a great job of that. The other thing I want to say is that your discussion and argument in terms of the counselors for tying each counselor to two clusters is a very persuasive argument because I can't understand how you run a middle school by dividing up kids alphabetically because you're making a very valid point in that then they have to access every teacher in the building rather than developing a relationship teacher to counselor to kid, so.
Thank you. I think our counselors would agree.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So it's just more efficient.
Mr. Carden?
Thank you. So two quick things. One is, since you're new here, just to explain a little bit more about our budget process going forward. So we like to get an idea from you all, what your requests are, but we do have a limited amount of money, so there's a prioritization. We're trying to get more. We know we have a significant amount this year because of a favorable funding formula we get from the town due to our enrollment growth, so we do have a significant amount of money, but it gets eaten up fast. You've got seven FTE here.
Yeah.
You know, high school has nine. It gets eaten up very fast. So we do go through our prioritization process over the next few weeks, few months, and that's where you, as an administrative team, will want to have that discussion. These class sizes that you would have if you don't have these FTE are going to be horrible.
Yeah.
So to me, that's, at the middle school level, that's the number-one priority, and then we have to see where everything else fits in, but that's a discussion that you all have to have and give feedback through Dr. Bodie to us as a budget subcommittee and as a committee as we move forward with developing the budget, which needs to be done by February, so that's where we go from here. Then my second question was actually more about the five-year plan, which we're also working on, which is new to the district.
Yeah.
That's the thing we've ever done before. And while I have you here, we're probably not going to have another opportunity to go over that with you all. My question for you is about the additional clusters you're asking for.
Yes.
So I think the numbers, the numbers that you're using are a little bit high, which I'll go over with John tomorrow. We have a budget subcommittee meeting, so we'll get back to you on whether you're using the right numbers.
Okay.
But given, given that, though, still, it looks to me more like you're going to need a half cluster at each grade, not a, not an additional full cluster at each grade. So just something to think about. I mean, obviously, if you want to go to the, you know, the model where they're teaching four classes instead of five, that's a different conversation, but if you're keeping them teaching five classes and you have, you know, 480 students, it really, the math works for four and a half clusters, not five.
No, I think as you look out for that five years, it becomes a question of what you think is an ideal size. So if you look at, you know, some schools who will say, you know, we want our average class sizes to be 18 to 21.
Right.
It's going to be different clusters than if you say, I want to be in the ballpark of 22 to 24, and I understand that, and I also understand, you know, increasing enrollments, the high school, I understand that, you know, I think I kind of get the fiscal.
Yeah.
Landscape that is coming. You know, when I put in a full team or cluster, I'm operating, hopefully, that, you know, that team could be more to 100, and I'm not sure if that's going to be reasonable, or it's going to be financial sound in a couple years. There are some things that are easier for me to forecast.
Right.
Because you, you look at, for example, the school counselors, well, we gain 50 more kids the next year, that's 12 more on each caseload if we have four. That's easier for me to forecast. We have 40 sections right now of art, music, facts. I pretty much know that those class sizes are around somewhere a little over 22, and we will not need to add sections for two or three years. So kind of the bigger numbers for me, and the total enrollments and the lot of sections, it seems easier. You could, I mean, you could definitely be right. I was going under the assumption and looking at a five-year budget that I would probably rather ask and forecast a little bit more.
Right.
Than coming back with hat in hand and saying, like, I really have a good idea, like, I really need, you know, an extra half cluster or so.
Right, right. But I guess my question is, you know, are you trying, I mean, if you are trying to get to clusters of 100.
Yeah.
That's a worthy goal, but that's different than just meeting the enrollment growth, right?
Right.
So I think that's something we need to, you know, as we develop the five-year plan, there's a sort of two separate things. One is sort of keeping class sizes under 25, which is status quo.
Right.
And how much you need for that. The other is, you know, possibly going to smaller clusters. We did have smaller clusters about 10 years ago.
Right.
But they're long gone. So then that would be balancing that against some of the other things the district needs, like assistant principals or, you know, just, or technology learning specialists or things like that. So we get this balancing again, but I think just, you need to be clear as we go forward whether the goal is to keep up, keep class sizes where they are, or drive them down to a smaller-sized cluster.
Right. I mean, of course, I'd rather have smaller class sizes. You know, I, you know, I'm trying to, right now, make sure that they don't go over 25.
Yes.
I feel like 25.
Oh, yeah.
Is a tough number at the middle school level to have more kids than 25. You know, ideally, I would love to have 20. I don't know in this environment with the budget if that's reasonable. I think it's reasonable to be under 25. I'd love to shoot for.
Okay.
Lower class sizes, but I think I understand the budgeting, you know, implications, and also in talking with Matt and Kristen of what we need as an administrative team.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Bodie?
I just want to reassure the committee that all of our administrators are very aware of this process, but what we're trying to do, these two school committee meetings, is to have a chance for you to ask very specific questions about these requests and, because there's often not that opportunity at other times. But we are prepared to make a lot of priority decisions in January. As principals and curriculum managers, everyone is aware of what the needs are, and then the tough task is to figure out, when you put everything together, how do you prioritize to the money that we could have? And then there would be some things that perhaps if we get additional money, would be waiting for funding later. So we've gone through this process before, and in the process, one of the things that happens is that all levels gets to understand what the needs are. And in some years, we agree as a group that the need in terms of impact on student learning and social emotional growth may swing more toward funding at the elementary level, sometimes it swings more to the, it has a fluctuation to it, but it is in the judgment what we will bring forward to you. And then, of course, you will have an opportunity to decide if you agree with these priorities, and, you know, most of the time, we agree, and sometimes, like last year, there was a couple of things that, you know, were very important to the school committee. But, yeah, we will, we will do this work, and we are already beginning this work and have been.
Thank you. Okay. I had one question for the Audison. I was just wondering, when you're keeping the class sizes below 25, what does that imply for cluster size?
So you usually have, when you, I mean, we have five, teachers at the Audison teach five classes, so, you know, I think right now, if we could have that extra half cluster, we'd have cluster sizes would be about 110 people on a cluster, you know, maybe 110, 115. If you have 25 or even above that, teachers would have about 125 to 130. That's a lot of kids for, you know, an English teacher to have and worry about correcting 125, 130 essays, you know, and I think it does affect the education your kids receive because when you do have that many kids, just the amount of correcting and the amount of time that you can give to individual students, I think, is difficult.
Right, that's what, that's why I was asking the question. I think that's actually a helpful number for us to be seen, as well as the class sizes, because it does, I mean, it affects all the things that you mentioned, and also just the ability of the teachers to interact with the students.
Yeah.
How much time they have and how much attention they can pay, and it, so I think it's a helpful thing for us when we're, for us to know because it's in front of us as we go forward making decisions. So, thank you. Okay, so I think we're set with Audison, and now we'll move on to the high school.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, yeah, first of all, thank you very much for having me here. I appreciate all you do. Thank you to the administration for the work we've done together in figuring things out. And thank you particularly to our teachers and staff who've produced such an amazing school at the high school. I always feel a need, every time I get in front of a microphone and we start talking about the list of places we need to do this and all the reasons why that's creating problems, to preamble that with appreciation for the incredible work education that this whole district does. Arlington High School continues to be an incredibly high-performing school, and as I say, I think to everybody ad nauseam, it's important to remember that Massachusetts is one of the highest, is the highest-performing state, depending on how you look at it in the country, that if it was a country, it produces comparable results on the PISA International Compare since the top-performing states. So with Arlington High School having risen now to be ninth in the state of Massachusetts, we are one of the best public high schools in the world, and we do that because we stand on the shoulders of the middle school, two of them now, and seven elementary schools, and a lot of amazing teachers who work under some challenging conditions, and we make it work. So now we'll go into the begging part. I really do appreciate the financial challenges that you have in front of us, and I apologize for the relatively large number that I will come out with at the end of this. I went through this process a little bit differently than I have in the past, in part because I think I really appreciate that the school committee is looking to do a five-year plan as opposed to sort of doing it one year at a time. I think to sort of figure out how we smooth things out and move over time is a very helpful way to approach this. And then, secondly, because one of the things that we have found is, we've had many, many conversations about a .2 English teacher and a .4 math teacher and one more special education teacher, and when we go through all of those asks, we get an even bigger number than the 10 or the 9.6 we're asking for. And so doing a little bit more of back of the envelope and then figuring out how that then fits together over time is important. So I'd like to do most of my talk focusing on the chart, which I went through, which was looking at five-year asks and explaining what each of those things mean and how we get there. And an important part of that is to understand a little bit, before I do this, about how we do class scheduling at the high school. At the high school, unlike the middle school, we don't sort of slot everybody forward into the next wave. Students request a whole range of classes, and we shift them around in order to figure out where we're going to staff. So it's not entirely easy at the beginning to know whether we're going to have a section of oceanography or a section of physics because we're not sure which classes the students are going to go into. We can make some pretty good estimates and guesses, but when we are getting to the .2 and trying to figure out exactly where to shift people, we don't know all of that. What we have tended to do over the last six years, well, five years that I've been here, this is my sixth, each year, our enrollment has gone up a little, now it's starting to go up a lot. Each year, we've gotten a little bit less than the staffing we need to cover those enrollment changes. Last year, we actually got enrollment, we got staffing increases that matched our enrollment changes, which was nice, but in the previous years, each year, we fell a little bit Each year, we've gotten a little bit less than the staffing we need to cover those enrollment changes. Last year, we actually got enrollment, we got staffing increases that matched our enrollment changes, which was nice, but in the previous years, each year, we fell a little bit behind. And the way we handle the falling a little bit behind is that we staff the core academic activities, the, the, the classes that are required, English, math, science, social studies, enrolled language first, then we staff the core requirements in art, and then the electives, we sort of work on with what we have left. The result of that is, over time, although you don't see it necessarily in the class sizes in the core, you do see it in the fact that kids aren't able to get some of the classes, and that we start to lose flexibility over time, and that leads to scheduling challenges that continue to get harder. So now, let me just talk a little bit about the numbers. With the additional forty-two students that we anticipate next year, in order to simply staff two more sections in all of the areas for those classes, students take seven classes a day, if you have an average of twenty students in each of those classes, we're going to need an additional three teachers to staff those classes. That doesn't mean that every class has twenty students in it, it actually means that some of the classes have twenty-five, some of the classes have eighteen, as we, because some of the classes are purposely done for different things. We then went through, if you look at the chart, um, looking at the fractions in terms of what we expect, in terms of general increases over time, so we are looking at an increase in just general special education needs of a point-two teacher. If you go down to the next level, the House Secretary is a separate issue. So, last year, we went to a three-house system, similar in the things we're trying to do as the cluster system, although different in the high school. So we have three houses, our goal is to keep each of those under five hundred students. We also scraped a little bit in order to make it so that we actually have six guidance counselors, two for each house. That allows us to have a true-house structure, and guidance counselor caseloads under two-hundred and fifty, which is the NEASC recommendation and the professional recommendation of the Association for High Schools Counselors. I will go back and forth between guidance counselor and school counselor, because I haven't gotten the habit yet, but it's the same thing. So, we made that move, but we did not staff fully the column house, so we still are needing a halftime guidance secretary, I'm sorry, House Secretary, to help that house in terms of keeping the office open, and supervising students with attendance and other issues, and helping Mr. McKnight. So skipping down then to the next, I talk about historical understaffing, and that goes back to the argument I was making earlier on, that we have continued to squeeze on the other areas. If you look down below, if you go down to bullet point, uh, number six, where it's titled understaffing, right now, large class sizes in the core content areas are starting to grow. And as you can see, we pushed a lot of extra staffing into English, so that's the least problematic. Only thirteen percent of those classes are over twenty-five. In math, we're at twenty-six percent, in history at twenty-seven percent, and in science at forty percent. So as you can imagine, next year, if we get additional staff, one of the first places we're going to be putting people is into figuring out how to have more science. That's a double challenge, and I'll talk about that at the end, because we are also lacking science classrooms. But having large science classrooms is particularly problematic in our building, because our science labs are too few and too small. So right now, MSBA recommendations are fourteen hundred square-foot classrooms, we have only one classroom that meets that requirement. So when you've got a class that's over their recommendation of twenty to twenty-three, and those classes are at twenty-five, twenty-seven, and thirty, it really limits what teachers can do in terms of lab science, and can create safety issues in terms of moving around. And even in our labs, some of those, not only are a thousand square feet, but they're a thousand square feet with a post in the middle. So they're particularly problematic. So that's one of the areas we would look. So if you look, the other area, if you look as well, is in our general electives. So if we don't have enough electives, students end up with holes in their schedule. The other thing that they get in addition to holes in their schedule, is imagine I've got a kid who's taking Algebra I but wants to drop a level. In order to drop a level, they have to switch what period they want to do that in. They're not able to switch that period because they can't get into any electives after school starts. So, in particular, if you just do the simple math, we could have easily, we had more, enough requests to run an additional two or three sections of culinary, we had enough requests for the required art class last year, to run an additional two or three sections of the introductory art class. All of those sections are full. So that's one FTE there. If you simply staff appropriately the science sections that are too large, that's another FTE there. So that's simply bringing us back down to where we ought to be. If we get the three FTE, as I mentioned at the beginning, those ratios will stay the same, because that'll just go into continuing the increase. The next, which I'm really very excited to talk about, is co-taught and inclusion classes. And that is an investment on the part of the school district, in really supporting students for achieving at a high level. So, a few years ago, we began looking at, so if you think about our curriculum, at the high school, we have high school honors, college prep, which we call Curriculum A, and then what we call Curriculum B. Curriculum B is a modified standard, it is not a college and career-ready standard. Students can achieve at that level, many of the students do achieve the MCAS and get a full diploma, but it's not teaching to the full-state standards. What we found, starting about three years ago, was that when we appropriately staffed sections with a mix of special education, high-needs, and other students, with additional time and resources, those students who have traditionally been placed in Curriculum B classes, were able to master the Curriculum A standard. So it becomes really imperative for us, if we know that those students can achieve that standard, if we just give them the setting and the appropriate education, we really need to work in that direction. So last year, um, in all of the core content areas, we created co-taught sections, where students are being taught to a Curriculum A level, and there are two teachers, a regular education teacher and a special education teacher working together. That has been effective at teaching those students to a higher level and at meeting the Curriculum A standard. However, um, the result has been, in a lot of those classes, a concentration of higher need students. So if you're working towards a co-taught model, where students are working with other students at the Curriculum A level, you don't want a section where ten or fifteen of those students are special education students, and the other ten or fifteen or whatever, so it's more than half. Because in the end, you end up with a section which is not really having peers that are working at that same level. So we knew that we would have that challenge going into the first year, we did it with the staffing that we have, we've had success with that. But if we're going to move to a truly co-taught inclusion model, you really don't want more than thirty percent of a typical class, or about a third of a typical class, to be students who are on IEPs who have special needs. You want to be able to mix those students with other students in a typical Curriculum A class, with additional support. In order to do that, we need to add sections, additional sections in each of the core content areas in the required classes. So at the moment, we're asking for one point four FTE to do that. Bullet point nine, which talks about compass and specific student needs, is analogous to the conversation you had about the Gibbs. Sometimes we have one, or two, or four high-need students who require programming at the high school. And we have a choice at the high school if we're going to support those students. We can send them out of district at a cost of fifty to a hundred thousand dollars a student, which is neither as good for the student, or as good for our programming, nor the commitment we have as educators, or we can try to build programming for them here. That can be a hard thing to hear as a school committee, because it may be that you're asking for one staff person for four kids. But understand, those four kids are going to cost us twice as much as they go out of district, and they're not necessarily going to get as good results. We really believe in keeping students in the school. So, right now, we have, in terms of our sub-separate and specialized programs, we have our Summit Program and our Reach Program. At the middle school, they have a compass program. The high school, that program had gone, been existing in the past, but had gone away. We have been building up the capacity to support those students at the high school, and we want to hold on to them, so we want to build that compass program back out again next year. That requires one more FTE. And then to allow our Summit and Reach Programs to serve the needs of the students in the programs, we need an additional FTE. So that's a hard ask, I know, when we're talking about, you know, a small number of people, and teachers are expensive, um, but it really is necessary to support the needs of those students. While we're on the special education, actually, these last two bullets, I apologize, Allison and I double-counted, um, so actually, it doesn't change the ask for this year, but it does change the ask for next year. Right now, we're requesting a point-six FTE for special education. At various points in the last six years, we've actually had one point five, um, FTE of team chair, and it's been absorbed or shifted in other ways, but it really is becoming a need. With the addition of those higher-need students in those specialized programs, um, educational planning becomes more complicated, and therefore requires more attention. In addition, we have this simple enrollment growing in the high school, so that, you know, whereas we had a position in various points in the past with twelve hundred students, was one to one and a half s, team chairs, we're now going to be hitting fourteen hundred and fifty or so, and we're only going to have one team chair. And so, after a point, we start having compliance issues. So we're asking for the point-six FTE team chair this year, and then next year, we would build that out to a full-time position with the service-only team chair. So actually, you can delete, uh, if you look in the column, the point-four, next year for team chair can go away, and the service-only private chair could be a point-four, so it's really only one position out, one and a half. I apologize for getting my numbers wrong. So that's the basic numbers around staffing. And then I also want to talk a little bit about what we've been doing in the school with those deans, and with those, uh, school counselors, and with the social workers, to really work on a system of effective support for students. Starting two years ago, we piloted an approach called collaborative problem-solving in the school. A number of staff, all of the deans, a number of guidance counselors, went out for a two and a half-day training on collaborative problem-solving. All of our guidance staff, um, social workers, and a lot of other support staff had introductory training, and then the entire staff, um, was introduced to the concept of collaborative problem solving. Collaborative problem-solving is a positive approach to school discipline and student behavior, and it works from the concept that students succeed if they can, and it's important to think about what that means. Most of the time, our disciplinary code works on the idea of students succeed if they want to. And the issue is, we know that that's not really true, but the reality is, what do we do? If you do something wrong, you know, if you come late to class, you get a detention. If you act out in school, you get a suspension. So we want to make you, you want to behave better, because you know the consequences are bad. And the idea of collaborative problem-solving is that students succeed if they can, that the problem is a development, developmental one, and requires skill development. And so the staff have been working on sitting down with students and going through a process of identifying the lagging skills and unsolved problems, helping the students work on building those skills in order to be successful. We've had really remarkable success. I've been, um, very surprised at the skill of the deans, their eagerness to attend to it, the work of the school counselors and the social workers to adopt it, and frankly, the work of the teachers to embrace that approach, that when you send the kid to the dean, instead of saying, um, "You did something wrong, I'll punish them for you," the deans are sitting down and trying to figure out a solution, so the student will be successful in the class. And, I mean, the simple numbers can be dangerous, but really, the amazing thing is that, if you go back two years ago, we had seventy-six suspensions. Last year, we had only forty. Twenty-four of those were in the month of May. So we got through all of last year with sixteen suspensions over the course of a full year. Now that will go up and down, vaping and THC are a challenge this year, and so we may find that suspension levels go up, but general behavior around, um, student detention, student, um, conflict in the school are improving at a remarkable rate. So this year, we are, we did a readiness survey last year, this year, that team of folks that had advanced training are getting coached, um, every other week on the process by folks from MGH, um, so that we can really get better and eventually be trained to be trainers ourselves. We'll be having another cohort of folks go through that advanced training, and my plan is that next year, we will actually train the entire staff. MGH is excited enough about this that they're rewriting their curriculum, so it fits into the way we do things here, because it doesn't fit into the way schools work otherwise. They're like, oh, yeah, two and a half days for the entire staff. I just laughed, I said, I can come up with the money, but I can't come up with the time. That will cost about fifty thousand dollars. This past year's work has been grant-funded primarily, and scraped together from other PD funds, but it is something I think we need to make a commitment to. In addition, and I'll just wave my hand at those, we've done a lot of work on social emotional learning, they're big issues, they just don't have a lot of time for them right now, and cultural competency over the last year, there've been a lot of training, a lot of work with students, um, and the big efforts we made were Wellness Day and, um, Inclusion Day, which we piloted last year, and we had Wellness Day, was it Thursday, just yesterday, um, this year, which, uh, we learned a lot of good and bad things from, we're going to have to change the format a little bit, we made it a little bit too easy for kids to skip school yesterday. So, the kids who came had a really positive experience, we had some wonderful programming, but we need to work on attendance. Last year, they hadn't figured it out, I think they did this year. But we're working on Inclusion Day for the spring. Digital technology continues to be an area of need. There is a plan that, um, Dr. McNeil has been working on with Mr. Good. They've done really a remarkable job of making sure that our needs are covered this year, I want to give them huge kudos. Instead of scraping and wondering whether you can get it, they've been really planfully thinking about making sure that the technology gets to the right folks. So when they come and give you a number, you should trust them, because we've been working with them really well. And then, last but not least, the building, which is consuming everyone's, um, dreams, but not necessarily everyone's day-to-day. So we're planning for a new building, we're very excited about it, we think it will have a huge positive impact on the students. But we are going to live in this building for the next four years. In the next year, if we get any of those teachers you're looking for, we're going to need three more classrooms, and if we get any of that science coverage, we're going to need another lab of some sort. We have, at the moment, nine, over ninety percent usage in the labs, there's just no place to put people. Um, and so, while you're doing your budget planning, a new classroom ends up costing around fifteen thousand dollars in furniture, paint, and other repairs. A lab can cost as much as seventy thousand dollars, depending on what you have to do. We'll try to put it in a place where there's plugs and plumbing. And then, we really do need to make sure that we make time and effort, because, uh, the restrooms in the building are horrible. The doors, the fifty-five doors that we have are not built for the kind of use they get, they're old. It would cost hundred, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars to fix them all, but every year, we spend ten to fifty thousand dollars just repairing and supervising and getting cameras, to make sure we can keep the building safe. It's a wonderful thing that we have such a safe community and such great kids, that for the most part, even though, even though we can't necessarily control all of the exits, the control and safety in the school is really positive. So, um, I appreciate, again, everything everyone has said, I'll just check my notes. Um, and I also just want to thank Allison Elmer for trusting me to handle the special education part of the, the ask, because, um, I think it's really important that it's seen as something that is part of the whole program, so I appreciate that we didn't deal with it separately, um, but if you have any questions, you should ask her.
Mr. Schlickman?
Very thoughtful presentation. Uh, I appreciate it. I appreciate, very much appreciate the fact that you went through with the grid at the beginning, looking at staffing on a formula basis. Because from this seat here, when we're dealing with a high school, I want to give you enough FTEs to do what you need to do, I don't want to count English teachers and math teachers, I want you to be able to do what you said you're going to end up doing. At the end of the scheduling process, is count up the student requests and aligning the staff to the student requests, rather than the opinion of the school committee as to what you should have. So, I'm very appreciative of this, and I support the way you built this. So I, I've got the, one question here, uh, that you're talking about fifteen thousand dollars per, uh, classroom, assuming that we're going to do some other jury-rig bo, boards and whatever, the, like these diagonal rooms and silliness we have. So if, when we do the renovation, or the, the rebuild of Arlington High School, we know we're going to need portables, or at least my assumption is, no, we're not going to need portables at any point in this? Oh, so we're going to be able to swing across this without, okay. I, I'm sort of in the dark here as to exactly how the, the, the plot thickens through the construction process. We're going to be able to house everybody over here while we're doing this and swing them?
Yeah, swinging, spacing the two buildings in the front first, and then we start moving people at, well, we can go through the whole phasing process with the committee.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be helpful.
We, well, basically, simple version, we won't move anybody for the first two years, and then we're going to have a new building out front, but, um, we won't be tearing down a lot of the classroom spaces until very near to the end.
Yeah.
So we'll have plenty of space.
So, it, so that we need to get from now to the point where the front is open, at that point, the pressure will be relieved, and we don't have to go forward. So this is just sort of a stopgap until, uh, let's, let's say if we start construction in 2020, we're, how, how long do we have to go before we can start to move out front? Two years?
Two years.
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
January of 2022.
Okay. So I, I just want to get that set in my mind, and because I'm not in the building committee, I don't have that.
So between now and January 2022, the question is, how are we going to make the school work with the, with what you have? Yes, well, that is the challenge, right? And that has been part of our challenge, actually, as long as I've been here, which is that people keep saying we're going to get a new building, so let's not spend money on that. But, um, the reality is, and some of this will be about space, there are people, there are probably going to be programs that will start moving out next year, which will make space for us, um, because we're going to need those new classrooms before we get the new building, um, but we will need to furnish those classrooms. And that's, you know, we're not doing fancy jobs, we're getting basic desks and tables, we're getting projectors and screens, we're painting things, we're putting electrical and wifi, but it, it costs money.
Yeah.
We might be able to do it for eight thousand dollars a classroom. We might be able to do it for eight thousand dollars a classroom, but we're gonna have to do it. And then the, the biggest challenge, which I know is a real challenge, is we need a science lab. And there are a few rooms in the building, don't mention whose they are because someone's in them now and they don't want to lose them. But there are build, rooms in the building that have plumbing, that have electrical, that potentially could be used for physics labs, chemistry labs, more likely actually physics or biology than chemistry. And they cost money to outfit. And, and I appreciate, honestly, we put a lot of money into the new CAD lab. We had to run wires out there. We put a whole bunch of new computers in there in order to put the electrical in there. But we also took away a library classroom in order to do it, and we took the old CAD lab and turned that into a physics classroom. And, you know, and that's what we've had to do every year.
Yeah, it does pain me to put money into a building that we're going to demolish in four years, say, you know. But, yeah, we do need to run a school for the four years we have to maintain. So that's why I need to know exactly how this is working out and why we're doing this so that, you know, when somebody comes and asks us why, why we're doing it this way and why we're putting in the budget, we've, we've got a ready-made answer. And I'm gonna ask the superintendent, the question was raised on the preschool application form, that there's a line at the bottom regarding, there may be a change in fees, there may be a change in location, there may be a change of hours, and people are asking about that. I assume that this is part of it?
Well, one of the things we, from the very beginning of the high school project, we have felt strongly about is that when we actually get into construction, that this is not a building we want little kids to be in. So we have been planning from the very beginning as to what will happen with the preschool. And, and, you know, at this point, you know, one of the things that's, that's been certainly out in the public is we are looking at the perimeter school in order to do some renovations there that would be necessary. For example, if we put the preschool there, and, and that preschool would be there for a number of years, it would be through the entire project. We have to put an elevator in. So there are things that we have to do in order to be able to house the preschool. So yes, hours and us, I mean, I would be prepared to talk about tonight, and when the middle, the preschool could do that, we're still doing a study on that. But that is the thought. And if we were to do that, for, first of all, when construction begins on the high school, the front entrance here is not gonna be the front entrance for doing anything. So we have to move administration and to the back of the building, which will be the new front entrance for a while. So there's, there's some retrofitting that's gonna have to go on, but that would, with the preschool moving, that would open up some space from additional, but that doesn't solve next year. And therein lies one of the challenges, is how to create some space for next year.
Because one of the, one of the things is that on Facebook, I saw this post about the preschool, and the line, I, I didn't copy it, but it said that the application has that line, pending a school committee decision. And here I am in the school committee now that I've got people with that line on their application form, sort of questioning that and whether or not it's on the agenda for us tonight.
That's just the fee structure. If there were any change in fees, it has to be approved by you. So it, it's just a disclaimer, because we sent it out earlier in order to get people registered earlier, that we don't know where you're going with that. So it's just.
Well, the disclaimer.
Specifically, it says, please note that the 2019-20 tuition rates are under review by the school committee for possible increase, as well as start and end times, possible 2:00 PM end time for full day, 11:00 AM end time for half day. In addition, there may be a need for classrooms to be relocated based on school environment. That was, that was what it said. It's a little broader than just the fee.
So that, that means people are gonna come talking to us about this.
Right. So can I, can I, can I answer a little bit more on that? We fully know that any fee changes, it has to go to the school committee, which would go to the budget subcommittee. We don't know the proposal yet. In January, I'm going to come to you with a recommendation on the start time for the high school. That has a domino effect on the preschool because when would the preschool start? Because we can't have it starting at the same time the high school. So, so that's why they had to put a disclaimer in, because there are decisions that have not been made yet, but need to make sure that people are aware that there could be these changes.
Yeah, but if the disclaimer has the word "school committee" in it.
Well, you have to, you have to change the fees, yeah.
Yeah, but this, this puts people in a position of, oh, we gotta talk to the school committee about that.
Okay.
I see.
Okay. It was because it says, "under review by school committee," and none of us know about it. So that's, I think, where people are having problems.
I think she just was trying to get it out because people are asking, when is the registration? And knowing that those are decisions that needed to be made, she wanted to get something out to them.
I see.
So she was just putting the disclaimer.
I see.
Possibly not worded correctly, but just wanting people to know that there could be changes. But people are also asking, I'm trying to set up my schooling for next year. The private preschools are already doing this. Why are you doing this? And so.
Okay. We're gonna loop back to the high school now.
Yeah, let's get back.
Mr. Carton.
So, so thank you for the numbers about class sizes. I may be coming to you for, for more of that data, particularly when you, when you talk about, you know, the students that, like, can't get into some of their sort of elective choices. If you had some more data on that, that would be helpful as we're putting together our five-year plan to talk about that need.
So it, can I just respond a little to that?
Sure, of course.
It is a, we, it is a challenging metric to come up with because it is a metric on stuff that doesn't happen.
Ah, okay.
Right? Actually, we just had a conversation about this. I think next year, we're gonna, and I haven't put this with Sarah Byrd, but I think I'd like to have a, basically, a little table that guidance keeps track of when this, every time this becomes an issue, you just check it off so that we have a tally. Because what it ends up becoming is, it's the volume and frequency of the agonized emails to me and other administrators, that I have this kid who's trying to do this, that, and the other thing, and there's no way to do it because we have gridlock. And then what ends up happening is, of course, just no change in the schedule and an unhappy person. So it is, it is something we need to track. I don't have good numbers on it, though.
And then, you know, I'm very excited about the inclusion programming. I think that, that's great. On the, on the compass program, I'm a bit more skeptical. I mean, a lot of those kids are going to the lab program. They're not going to a hundred thousand dollar private schools. The lab is a public program. There's no rational reason why our program should be, except for the transportation costs and the fact that the kids have to go to, out of town, there's no rational reason why our program necessarily has to be cheaper or more efficient than their program. So I would like to have a broader discussion at the committee about reestablishing that program, what, what the rationale is for, what the multi-year plan is for phasing that in. One teacher isn't gonna create a life skills program. You know, you need to have somebody who's organizing community outings and doing other things. So I want to table that for another discussion if possible. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Thelman.
Okay, so, you know, the five-year timeline for staffing increases, this is usually Len's question, so, you know, jump in and help me make it better. If, for priorities, like you, you have on this page, three classroom teachers, point two, special ed, point five, secretary, historical understaffing, two, if you had to prioritize that, if we had to make a decision, at the end of the day, by the way.
I hate it when you ask this question.
I know, but at the end of the day, just.
To my children, do I like the best, is the question.
I know. Yeah, that's, that's right. Well, we kind of know. No kidding. The, I'm kidding about that. The, the, you know, the school committee passes a budget and the, and we don't tell people exactly, but we have an assumption. We operate on some assumption. So I just would be curious to know what you would prioritize.
Well, I mean, the honest truth is, what we, you have to start out with staffing the core content area classes, because those have to be filled, and they're dealing with stuff where we are held to, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic. If we don't make sure that the kids learn there, that they're not gonna graduate. So we'd staff that, we'd staff the special education requirements because we are required to do so in order to serve those students' needs. From there, I would probably scrape and build out for, for inclusion because we have a real commitment to that. And the, because in the end, what we want to focus on is the most, the highest levels of need, right? Students, I mean, what we end up doing, for example, is our AP classes have twenty-nine, twenty-seven kids in them because the students are independent, because the students can manage their own behavior, and they can manage their own work. But they don't get the relationships, they don't get the feedback, they don't get the quality of educational experience that they want to get. So that's in robbing Peter to pay Paul, you know? And so, but the differences between a, an AP or an honor student who can manage their way through a more challenging classroom environment, and students who need higher levels of support with executive function, higher levels of scaffolding to learn, and if that's that student, and they're not gonna learn to read, and they're not gonna be successful in school at all if they don't get it, that's where we'd put those resources.
Class sizes for the APs, the honors, I mean, are you finding, are you finding that there's, you're finding generally that there's, one way to measure success, I guess, in those classes is, are AP scores, are AP scores consistently the same? Or are grades, do you see any, do you see any challenge with the size of those classes? Because here, parents tell me a lot that those classes are large, AP and honors classes especially. And what do you, is there any data to, to support the fact that those classes have any challenges? For a kid? Did you get the question?
Yeah, no, I do. I mean, you have high levels of stress, you have much higher levels of, you have much higher levels of anxiety and school refusal at our highest level in students right now than we have ever had in the past.
Yeah.
That's why our harbor and shortstop program has grown. That's why our, you know, the demands on guidance have grown. It's hard in a community like ours with kids and teachers who are as capable as ours to go with just the AP scores, right? Because the kids will find a way.
Yeah.
You know, they will, and, but the AP scores don't tell very much in terms of the depth and complexity of the learning experience. Because the AP tests what the AP tests. What ends up happening is, if you talk to the teachers, they are teaching more and more to the test because they can't do the deeper conversations and the deeper, deeper coaching. So just yesterday, I met with the English department, and the English department is feeling extremely stressed by the fact that the seniors show up, and at the beginning of the senior year, they do their senior college essay. And then, having done their senior college essay, they want to meet with and workshop with and talk to their English teachers. But their English teachers have very large class load sizes, and particularly among the high performing students, they don't have the time or energy or bandwidth to do that with the students. And there's not space to do that in a class if you've got classes of that size. You know, if you're an English teacher and you've got a hundred and twenty-five students, and we talked about what that's like for the middle school, but the high school students produce twice as much writing, right? So you give those kids a period of time to do it, and it's a lot more writing, which needs a lot more feedback. So I don't, our AP scores have continued to sustain their, our test scores have continued to go up. I, I think we just have to wonder how long and sustainable and at what cost.
Right, and that's not the only indicators you indicated.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, so I had one question. Thank you very much. This is really helpful. And I like the chart also. So I don't think, and I don't think any of us think, that test scores are the only measure of success, but it is a metric that's used on our district. And I wonder if the inclusion classes are mapping to higher MCAS scores or anything for all the students who are in the class.
So we've only just started, but it was, I mean, two years ago when we began, you had students who would have been in a curriculum B class who are now passing the MCAS. They're small cohorts, so to map year to year with different groups of students is challenging, but we are teaching those students to a higher level, and they are succeeding on the MCAS.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's all the questions we have for the high school. Do we want to do the value engineering first? So we know, Mr. Maybe, we know that you have budget requests too, but I wonder if you'd permit us to go on to the value engineering section so that we can, yeah, okay.
It's only gonna be a few minutes if you want that.
Okay. So, so this has been put on the agenda. The value engineering is looking at the high school building project and thinking ahead to whether we will need to make any trade-offs and thinking about what those trade-offs would be, looking at the cost of the building versus the features and stuff that we would get. I felt there isn't really a process to come back and talk to school committee about these things, but I felt that, especially for a lot of the education-related things, that we as school committee members should be weighing in rather than having, I don't, we haven't finished talking about how the process is gonna work in building committee, but I didn't think just building committee should be doing all the decision-making, and at least that we should be making our opinions known. You don't have a handout now because the better handout that we have is coming. Amy Spear and I are working on something in conjunction with the finance subcommittee that looks at cost proposal, that gives more information than what we were getting from Skanska. It looks at the cost proposals and talks about what the reduction, what the actual reductions are, and then looks at benefits or what the impacts are if we were to make these reductions. I couldn't share it with you because it hasn't been shared with the full building committee, but you'll get it next week, and we'll have more discussion next week. But in the meantime, I asked if Dr. Jenger could speak to some of, I gave him the list, the draft list that we're working off of, and if he could speak to some of the reductions and what the impacts would be on the educational plan. So.
Did you have particular, I care if he just, I'm looking, and it was a long list.
Yeah. I think the ones that speak to you the most, I mean, the big, the auditorium and the gym is helpful, and then anything else that you feel like you want to chime in on.
So one of the things, I think, in terms of, I'm sensitive to Mr. Schlickman's comment that people are gonna come to you as experts on this, and there's an enormous amount of detail and time that's gone into this. So if you go back, the place I think that, from the perspective of the school committee, that's important to start is the educational program. So if you go through the educational program, which we discussed in here, but it's long, all of these spaces and the specific choices about making the spaces larger than the reimbursed spaces, which is most of what we're talking about, are all addressed in that program and the reasons for it and the recommendations. So I think that's a helpful place to go back. But we can talk about the, the big ones. So the auditorium. The MSBA will reimburse for up to a seven-hundred-and-fifty-seat auditorium. We currently have a nine-hundred-seat auditorium. The community discuss, they will allow you to, on your own nickel, add seats up to a thousand for your auditorium. So we went around, actually, a subcommittee went around, I went around, we talked, looked at other folks, we looked at guidelines for performing arts, and we looked at our usage. And our recommendation was for the nine-hundred-seat auditorium. A thousand seemed a little bit big. Nine-hundred, we figured we could probably squeeze into up our largest size. Functionally, for me, one of the biggest issues there is that when you look at programming in the school around sort of interesting things we might do, it's really important that we have a space that can hold half the gym, the school, and a space that can hold all of the school. So right now, our gym that's being designed, that we'll talk about in a second, is also larger. That space will be large enough to hold everybody when we get up to around seventeen-fifty-five. The auditorium will be large enough to hold half the school. That means we can have two gatherings at the same time where you're handling everybody. Plus, you just need a large auditorium for that larger facility. I can take two classes and run an event. If you look right now at our nine-hundred-seat auditorium, it is full for events all the time. And choral concerts, all-town concerts, all those sorts of things often have to run over two days as it is. And so the nine-hundred-seat auditorium seems like something that is, again, and actually, almost all of these things are either the ability to support something that we're already doing with the numbers we have, and in many cases, really, facilities we already have. So that's the argument for the nine-hundred-seat auditorium. The gym, the MSBA will reimburse for up to a twelve-thousand-square-foot gym. That's about the size of the gym we have now. It's not big enough. When we currently go down there for a pep rally or for any sort of an all-school assembly, we don't all fit. So simply for that, the argument to have a sixteen-thousand-square-foot gym, which they will allow you to do, makes a lot of sense. allow you to do, makes a lot of sense. In addition, the 16,000-square-foot gym allows us to put an indoor track so that our, our track program can do conditioning indoors. It's not a running track technically, it is a training track, because it's only about a twelfth of a mile and won't have banked sides, but that will fit around the outside. It also allows us to divide that space in half and run two gym classes at the same time. And so, again, if you're going to program for things like graduation, simply having pep rallies and all-school assemblies, and other sorts of programs like that, we really want to invest in that larger gym size. There was a lot of discussion about a fieldhouse as something that people really wanted for functionality. The MSBA won't let you do that. In fact, when we put two of our gym facilities, because we have all PE spaces as well, next to each other, they made us promise that we weren't just sneakily going to plan to tear down the wall and make a fieldhouse. They really don't want that to be something that towns do. The next larger space is the library, and there's actually a very detailed analysis. We did about four different approaches in terms of the usage, the spaces, the size, and the scope, to look at the space we need in the library. In our philosophy of education, the library's not just a place for books, it's actually the central learning commons for the school. It's where classes are gathering together to do interdisciplinary work, it's where we have presentations. If you go to our library right now, it is a hum of activity all the time. Students come and get their passes so they can go to the library during the free time they have, right at the beginning of the day. All three of those spaces, and this is important, are spaces you can't enlarge if the building turns out to be too small. And I think that's probably the biggest argument to the community. If it turns out that we end up at 2,000, we can add classrooms on the end, we can move into district spaces, that's doable, but you can't enlarge the gym, you can't enlarge the auditorium, and you can't enlarge the library. And so that's the reason for those spaces. Trying to think of what the other big ticket items were that were on that list. There's an additional PE space. So in our current facilities right now for PE, we have the red gym, which is 12,000 square feet, the blue gym, which is 7,000 square feet, and houses rock climbing programs, do baseball training in there, we run gymnastics in there, and then we have the pit. So, in the new space, we're actually going to have a little bit less square footage with, oh, and the weight room. We have the weight room, which is 4,000 square feet. So our plan is to have the 16,000-square-foot gym, a slightly smaller weight room, but better designed, an all-PE space which would replace the blue gym, that would be 7,000 square feet. So those spaces then provide enough space for us to basically replace the programming that we have now. I think that's it. Are there any big ones? Kiersey, you have the chart in front of you.
That's I'm pulling it up. If you could speak to the arts, performing arts spaces, the band chorus rooms, and the black box theater? I think those are the main ones.
So again, we now have what we call the little theater, and that's what it's referred to as in the program. The little theater is about 1,400 square feet, it's a basement space, but it's active with all kinds of programming in terms of small, small activities and smaller programs. The idea in this is to create a space that would be larger and more basically built to the purpose. It is what's called a black box, but the idea is you make a large multipurpose space so that you can either just practice in the whole space, you can divide it in half and have small performances. With a 3,000-square-foot little theater, we could seat up to 120 folks for small performances. Right now, we have the student-led one acts, which right now are on a little stage, or the giant theater. We have done other sorts of performing arts programs, we've had improv down in that space. But I would also imagine, one of the nice things about having the little theater be similar in size to the stage is, so, right now, this week, we have had wellness day where we had to clear the stage, but at the same time, we had the band practicing for their concert, and tomorrow we have the eighth grade coming, and they were all very concerned. I just was down there because we have to push back the seats, again, so our performing arts folks are moving them off, moving on. So if you have a sec, if the little theater is comparable in size to the stage, you can also do a lot of rehearsing and programming back in there while keeping the auditorium in use for all kinds of other purposes. Our band, if you've been to our band room, it is sort of a double-sized classroom, it is not at all built to suit. If you, I, we actually went through design features and program space for a performing arts centers. For the size of our band, which will now be 30 to 40 percent larger than it is now, we really need, I think it's a 2,500-square-foot band room, and similarly, the chorus as it grows in size. Right now, and Mr. Papazis isn't here to hear me sing their praises, but with changing in scheduling, we've actually, we've actually made it so the kids are much more able to get into the choral program. We have 40 freshmen right now in chorus. If we hold on to those kids, I can imagine having a chorus that's upwards of 150 kids, especially as you get to a bigger program. And so again, they need a larger room size, and so we're asking for that to be 2,500 square feet as well. And then there are other programming spaces around there. In the art department right now, we currently have four art rooms. Those are heavily used, and so, again, with 40 percent more staffing, we want to keep that level of use. We have a ceramic studio, which you can't go back and forth, and then the other art spaces. If we're going to keep those programs, we're asking for four spaces. That one additional art room is not, again, a non-reimbursed space. But it's also important to remember that they give us a certain number of homerooms, they take the number of students that are going to come into the school, I'm getting a little into the weeds now, stop me if I go too far, they give us a certain number of classroom spaces to run homerooms. And so we have 60 classroom spaces, and then all these other rooms that will be used for homeroom spaces. If we remove that art room as a non-reimbursed space, we're going to have to replace it with a classroom. So it's not that you lose the full, I can't remember, thousand some odd square feet, you replace that 1,200-square-foot room with an 850-square-foot room, and then you no longer have the use for an art studio. Science labs are another issue, we are asking for 17. It's unclear from their formula and our conversations with them whether or not the last three of those are reimbursed or not. Their language has one formula, but when you plug the number into their spreadsheet, it spits out 14. So we made the argument that their own formula says we should get 17 with the usage we have. We clearly need it, because if you do the math, if you're going to have 20 kids in a science lab, which is what you want, and you have 1,850 kids, and you have 110 percent occupation, so you're going to have 18.5 teachers plus another 10 percent, about 19.5. Those 19.5 teachers are going to need 17 labs. They're going to have to share a few of them, but they'll already be at 85 percent capacity when we start. So that's the argument we're making there in terms of science labs.
I think the only other one would be the discourse lab, if you just want to talk about what we'd lose if we didn't have it.
So, in the reimbursement formula, they talk about vocational and technical spaces, and so in the design and sort of philosophy of the school, we wanted specialized technical spaces that worked towards the technical features of every department. So each department, there's an immersion lab in the language, that's the language lab, there's the STEM lab for the math department, which is our computer science lab, there's the digital arts lab, there's the digital production studio, many of those, almost all of those still exist in one form or another. For the humanities, for English and social studies in particular, but also for the rest of the school, we envisioned something we called the discourse lab. Now that takes the place of the way we use old hall right now, for the most part, but it's built to suit. So it's a 120-student discussion center, so it's not a langu, we're not calling it a lecture hall because it's not seats with a guy in the front. It's designed to allow people to debate, discuss, and I don't know whether Kathy will want to use it for the school committee room. It'll be a very nice space for that purpose, if it's designed appropriately. It will be very useful for PD and other activities throughout the year. It's funny, it actually is one of the spaces which the most staff is the most excited about, which is why it has been moved front and center into the building, because people see many different uses for it. The plan is to have 120 seats, so that a lot of the time, a teacher or a class will want to bring in a speaker, and that's a really nice place to go and have a really focused thing with all four of your sections or all five of your sections of a class. So that's the design of that.
Okay. Mr. Hayner.
I want to commend you and members of the committee and everyone else on this committee. You've done a phenomenal job. I think all the additional things, with some exceptions, which I'll share with you in a minute, I support 100 percent. I don't think this school system has the right to have the quality theater and music program that it has with what it's got. I cannot imagine what the program will be like if we get what we're looking for here. I think it will be fantastic. I have a son who is a physics and chemistry teacher. When I showed him what we've got, he said y'all should be arrested for the, what we've got, the, we need to go forward, this is where it is, and I applaud it, and you have my 100 percent support. The seniors that I've had to deal with in the past, I think I've convinced a lot of them to go with that. That's it, that's the good news. I think numbers one through four, and number 13, we have to find a way, this is on the list that we have, we don't all have it?
No, we don't all have it.
Okay, then let me, let me share with you, and I think some of them have already been dealt with, the comptroller's office, facilities department, IT network, payroll, and the school district offices. And I think they've all been talked about at great length. I think we need to show the community that we absolutely 100 percent cannot find another space for them before we add those. I think the other programs that you mentioned tonight are essential to maintain the quality of the program and to continue the quality that's going forward. I think the theater program and the music program, I came from a district rotten dunce where they had a 1,000-seat theater, that had the off, the separate rooms off to the side. The amazing programs that they were able to do beyond what they were doing before, it was just fantastic, and continuing programs, and they found things to do that they didn't even know existed before, and they've kept it going. So I support, and I really applaud, all the work you folks have done. Thank you very much.
Anyone else want to, Mr. Carden?
So, just a question on the auditorium and the seating. Certainly, it would be an asset to the community, I hope the community supports a larger auditorium. But I also want to be, you know, clear with what is educationally required and what is nice to have for the community and for the concerts and for the things like that. My son's just a freshman, so he's only, you know, a third of the way through the year, but there hasn't been an assembly of double classes in the auditorium yet. How often is that really used for that purpose?
Well, some of that has to do with the ability to do it well, right? It's not a good space. I mean, I think we have, we have classes in there at least twice a year, twice a month, I mean, and other assemblies and other programs in there about twice a month.
But where you need to have two grades in there at the same time?
Certainly seems that way. And sometimes we don't, because it doesn't really work that well with two grades. The funny thing about our current theater is it has 900 seats, if you count all of them, including the broken ones. It's actually only the size for a 550-seat theater. So we don't really like to put everybody in there because they are really cheek to jowl when they're all there.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that if we're not currently using it that way, we shouldn't be selling it that way. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I would just counter that if it's not possible to use it that way.
It's something we want to have, right. Not something we currently have.
Okay. Mr. Schlichtman.
I don't think it's a want-to-have, I think that we've already demonstrated the need of every time we're having a concert or a play, we're selling it out for three nights. To downsize from that in a community with a growing school enrollment is going backwards. And, our intent here is to have a better quality facility, that, you know, we talk about the performing arts folks having the ability to move, to have the music facilities close enough to the stage to move in and out, and to have space where you can move in and out scenery and build the scenery adjacent enough that you can really do this well. And then, this becomes a community asset, and other folks can come in and use it as well. If we've got 900 seats in there right now, and we're filling them for events, there's a need in the community to have that, that size space. So I would, I would certainly argue for that, and for having all the performing arts auxiliary space that go with it, because we've got an outstanding program. We have an outstanding program in an awful facility, it would be wonderful to have them in a, in a great facility as well. We shouldn't be going backwards. And if you, in the argument you made regarding the ceramics room versus a regular classroom, it's 900 square foot versus 1250, I can't imagine that being that much of a cost difference over 30 years over the entire town that it's worth reducing the functionality of the building. Now, Mr. Hayner made a very valuable point for the things that are not high school-related per se, be it town offices, or being us, the central administration, yeah, I think that within the next couple of months, we should go take a look at what the other options are, whether or not we need, we as a school committee and central administration need to be in this building, or we can take these functions that are administrative and find another place for them, and what would that cost us? But this is not a community that has a lot of office space available and has a lot of ability to do that. So, but, but that has to be costed out, and we've got to be able to go to the community and say, well, you guys are building all this other stuff under the high school, we've got to be able to come with strict numbers. Okay, if we put this in the high school, this is the cost, if we move them out and put it elsewhere, these are the proposals we had, this is what it's going to cost for that, and, and make sense of it. But in terms of reducing the educational components of this project, any cost reduction on that is going to be very, very small when spread out over the town, but a major enough impact on the lives of students and kids going forward for the next 50 years. You're right, you can't expand the auditorium if it's too small, you can't expand the gym if it's too small. We are adding classrooms onto Thompson and Hardy because we needed the space, but that's a mistake we can't make with the central space in this building.
Can I just speak a little bit to the idea of sort of the empty theater? And one of the challenges of theaters always is you spend two weeks rehearsing in an empty theater. Right?
Yeah.
So, but, it's so that at the end, you can have a production where the 900 people come in. If you just go back in terms of programming, and we've had the winter concert, the fall play, today we had the winter, the concert, we will have the spring play, we have had, Edison has to run two different concerts to split their school to fit them into the space. We are just, we're planning for the spring inclusion day, which is only really able to happen because we can fit half the school into the space. So it's, it's not always full, but it is being programmed around in order to be able to create the event that happens in that space.
Mr. Thielman.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, if we built a 750-seat theater, we would regret it. We would look back and we would say we made a mistake. So we shouldn't, think about that. Every performance that we have in Arlington, just about every performance we have, the Addison Middle School, the high school, there's almost 900 people in those seats. I spoke at Duxbury High School last spring as part of some, something or other for, on my, with my day job, and the first section, the first session was juniors and seniors, and then freshmen and sophomores, and vice versa. And so they were able to put two, you know, all four, all four classes in two different groups for my, my talk. And it was, you know, it felt good, and it was a nice tiered auditorium there, if you've been at Duxbury High. So I, we need to have the same thing in a town like Arlington, and we can't, we can't, we can't be foolish about the size of the auditorium. It has to be 900 seats, it's what it is today, and we really, we really, I mean, we have to talk about it, it's part of our mandate to talk about this stuff, but that's what it's got to be. And the, the other issue to think about, to Bill's point about the district offices, that's a, that's a, that's a real, that's a, that's a, the conversation requires, it's not black and white, and it's not simple, it's, there's a lot of thought that has to go into it. One is, you know, what works educationally, and two is, if there, there may be a point, if you follow the current projection in the growth of the student enrollment in this district, we may reach a point where we're going to need more places for students. And you can move out the district offices for a period of years, five years, 10 years, and make those spaces into classrooms. And that's less expensive than doing an addition, which we would be forced to do if we don't have those spaces. So you have to think long-term, you have to think 50 to 100 years, long, long after most of us will be gone, one way or the other, from the town of Arlington. And, you know, you've got to remember that you're trying to leave something that's going to be used beyond the students who are in the school right now. You've got to think bigger than, than just what's in front of us.
Okay.
So, I don't know, these are, these are big, there's a lot of decisions, you know, the committee, and by the way, by the way, you know, there are, you should, the school committee should know that the committee should know that the, the committee is going to listen to everybody's voices, including the school committee's voices, and there are lots of different opinions on the school committee, on the building committee. So there are some people on the building committee who are of the mind of what Bill just articulated about the district offices, so there's, there's, there's a lot of different opinions on the, on the building committee, you never quite know which way things are going to go.
Okay. So, we are going to have next week to talk about it and I think formulate some kind of statement which we'll then pass on to the building committee. Are there any other questions that you have for Dr. Jang or about the educational things? Seeing none, okay, thank you very much for this and for your presentation.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, and?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm very appreciative that you brought this topic up to us tonight. I think it's important we be involved and have these conversations, and you're putting this on the agenda, and I very much appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
I don't, I don't want.
Just trying to do my job. Mr. Levy, sorry to put you off.
The AIA would like to thank the school committee for allowing us to present tonight. We hope you will consider the following requests for the 2019-20 school year. District-wide, we are requesting an increase in the number of and salary of substitute teachers and TAs. This would increase the number of substitute teachers to meet the district needs, which is a major issue. Also, TAs are being pulled from their assignments with students to cover teacher absences. It would also help to get and retain high-quality substitutes and TAs. Supplies and curriculum for all music and performing arts classes, an increase in academic and athletic stipends. These stipends have not seen an increase since the 2012-13 school year. Also, this will keep Arlington coaches' salaries competitive with other middle-sex league schools. Resume replacement of teacher laptops with the same type of device, an increased equity of technology among schools. Renewal of necessary online subscriptions and purchasing curriculum for all small group classes. Small group classes often have not been given set curriculum, teachers have to make it up as they go. This will provide teachers with curriculum needed to teach their classes. It will also enable students to work toward common core and state frameworks. Lastly, increase funds for professional development course reimbursement. For the high school, we are requesting an additional 1.0 FTE for ELA, 1.4 science, 1.0 learning specialists, 1 point social, 1.0 social studies, and 1.0 math. This is due to an increase in enrollment. We are also requesting an additional 1.0 FTE team chair to create equity compared to the middle schools and due to an increase of workload and caseload. Lastly, we are requesting an additional .5 house secretary. This will provide all deans and houses with administrative assistant help. For Edison, we are requesting an additional 2.0 FTE eighth-grade teachers. This will create four full clusters in both seventh and eighth grades. We are requesting an additional .3 FTE general ed music, .1 orchestra, 1.0 school counselor, 1.0 summit teacher, .6 Spanish, .4 French, and .6 physical education. This will help to, not only is this due to an increase in student enrollment, this will also help reduce class sizes and improve scheduling options. We also request an additional .6 FTE administrative assistant. Addressing the social-emotional needs of students means more meetings to be scheduled, more paperwork coordination with outside doctors and therapists, and more homeschool communication. We are also requesting an additional 1.0 FTE seventh-grade inclusion teacher and 1.0 FTE eighth-grade co-taught teacher. Each grade needs to have two inclusion and two co-taught teachers. In the lab collaborative report on Arlington's inclusionary practices, the co-taught program was commended for its effectively-designed model with a special education teacher and full-time teaching assistant for a cluster of seven to eight students at each grade level. Additional staff is needed to reach the recommended cohort number, as well as keeping the co-teaching class ratio of students with disabilities to typical students below the 50-50 ratio. An additional 1.0 FTE for ELL, this will allow push-in to classrooms and differentiated instruction to meet the district's goals of cultural proficiency. Lastly, for Edison, the AIA is requesting additional material for the following. Books and materials for the new eighth-grade civics curriculum, additional thematic texts for seventh grade focusing on global studies, and resources and books for the new eighth-grade science curriculum. At Gibbs, we are requesting an additional .4 FTE in physical education, an additional .2 in speech and language pathologies, an additional .4 in Spanish. This is due to an increase in student enrollment, and it will also meet growing students' needs, reduce class sizes, and allow for scheduling flexibility. Lastly, the AIA requests a gifted and talented program. Teachers feel we are not meeting the needs of our advanced students with differentiation alone. Sixth grade had ASAT OMS, but it was not included at Gibbs, and staff feels it's important to reach this special group of learners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Carden?
Yes. So I guess I'm a little surprised to hear about the laptop replacement, is, is that district-wide or just certain subjects, do you know?
It's something that's ongoing with the technology committee and something we're discussing currently in the district.
And we're working on a new technology plan, right? Is that going to come to us in the spring, or what's?
Yes. Yep, whoops. I'm working with David Good. Actually, we meet quite often, the instructional technology department and the technology department, and we also invite people, building administrators, in to tell us what their technology needs are. And so we have created a plan for the high school, we just have to define some of the other needs at the middle school and the elementary school level. But we are currently working on a five-year technology plan. And I know that the Capitol...
Planning Committee.
Planning Committee is meeting next week, so we plan to have the meeting, the plan finalized by then, so we can present it then.
Oh, okay, so we'll see you soon then.
But, you want me to talk about the Chromebook?
Yeah.
So the, some of the issues that have been presented to us regarding the Chromebooks, you know, when the rollout was done, maybe a couple of years ago, that may have been some of the issues, but I, some of the issues have been identified, we have addressed those various issues, and so I feel like we need to definitely have a deeper discussion with teachers and with building administrators as to what those needs are. We've also tracked what some of the technology tickets, the help, at the help desk, in order to see what those issues are. Some of the issues have been, like for one example is the follow-you printing, teachers were having, you know, problems with printing large PDFs, but because of the various work we've done to the network, we've addressed that issue, and we've saw, we've seen a decrease in a number of help desk tickets for that particular issue. Also, we're looking at, you know, Chromebooks and being able to project on projecters. We have installed HDMI cables and HD, and projectors that utilize HDMI cables in order to do those, so that teachers can project with their Chromebooks. So I am very interested in, you know, meeting with Jason in order to see what some of the other issues are that are relating to the Chromebook. Because we've gone to the Chromebook, it has been very cost-effective, because we're able to supply more digital learning devices to various staff that may not have gotten a laptop because of the expense of the MacBook. So because we've gone and we purchased a cheaper machine, but we still feel like it's functional and, and students are able to utilize it to address their learning needs, and we feel like the teachers should also have the same type of digital learning device as their students, so they're able to, you know, have that type of coordination and alignment. But we, we don't want to stifle their ability to do their job, and that may be the case in some of the specialized positions as it relates to math and science, but overall, I've, you know, the issues that we've been able to address with the Chromebook have been addressed. So I am interested to see what those other issues are that, you know, we, that we don't seem to be meeting. So I'm just open to hear that more feedback regarding that. But presently, I feel like the Chromebook is meeting the needs, and we've been able to address some, you know, most of the issues that have been brought to our attention, if not all.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, certainly you can't use PowerPoint on a Chromebook, right? You have to use Google Slides instead, and it's not the same.
But we can put Microsoft Suites on the Chromebook as, as an application, so that's what I'm saying, like some of those issues are able to be addressed. So I, I think that some of that can be addressed through, like, you know, professional development for teachers, is to understand what the capabilities are of the Chromebook, but, you know, again, I would like to hear what some of those issues are, because the Chromebook has allowed us to reduce our costs as it relates to providing technology, and also as we look for, you know, we have to also think about the replacement, so we, so as Jeff was talking about, you know, the auditorium and the space at the high school, we have to also think when we're purchasing digital learning devices, we have to think about the long-term plan, like what is the cost of the replacement as technology advances every four or five years? So we also have to think about that when we go into, you know, selecting a digital learning device for, for students and for teachers and for staff.
Can I just clarify, so if the new technology plan is going to be ready next week, could we hear it at our meeting next week?
I don't think the plan will be ready. One of the things that we are, we're waiting to see is what the allocation will be from the Capitol Planning Committee. We have, again, asked for the amount we've had the past years, next week is the week that they will be making the recommendations. So I think that it's important for us to know exactly what...
The needs are.
The funding is going to be for the technology programming.
But we'll be able to identify the needs, and we'll be able to match the needs with the funding, so, I mean, that will be the, probably the piece that we have to finalize, and then we could present it to you.
Okay, so maybe January? I'm just trying to think ahead to what agenda to slot it into.
Let me, let's talk to David and get that, but I, I agree that it would be important for you to have that discussion before you go on to the last stage of the budgeting, okay?
And, and we could, we could, we actually have a meeting tomorrow, so we could, we can definitely.
Okay, and again, looping back, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Levy?
Did I answer your question about the technology?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, so, and, and thank you for the information, too. Okay, so moving on, superintendent's report.
Actually, don't have a lot this evening, but following up on the whole issue of the auditorium, tomorrow evening is the winter concert for the high school. And again, the community is invited. If you've never come to a high school concert, I think you will be rather pleased that you attended. So that is tomorrow evening. I, I'm not going to go through all of these grants, but I just want you to be aware that we have received three different grants. The, the awards are in the range of $7,000 to $10,000, but these are grants that will further the work we're doing, Safe and Supportive Schools. And what I'm going to do is give more complete explanation in an upcoming newsletter, but we continue to be looking for additional funding beyond what we have allocated through our operating budget. But, you know, I want to, I want to thank the people who work on these grants, which is a very collaborative effort, but certainly led by Julie Dunn, for the work they're doing to do this. And we're working right now on a, actually, we've already submitted a very large grant for nursing, which, get back to you, hopefully we will receive that grant. But in keeping with the discussion about the schools, there's nothing really much more to report about Hardy. I don't know when we're going to get the TCO, but it's probably going to be fairly soon. We know that we have furniture in the process right now of being delivered, and I think everything is going just as we had planned going forward. As respect to the high school, I, I think the discussion tonight gives you a good idea of the work that's currently going on with the high school plans. For people who are listening, the next meeting of the building committee is this coming Tuesday evening, here in the school committee room at 6:00. And that's it.
Great, thank you. So moving on, we have the consent agenda, we're now running two minutes ahead of schedule. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant, warrant number 19103 dated 11/29/2018, total amount of warrant Approval of minutes, regular school committee minutes of 11/29/2018. Approval of trips, US, U, AHS, UPenn Model Congress trip on March 28, 2019, and Edison, London, and Environs trip scheduled for April 2020.
Please hold the warrant. I can't vote on it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so we're holding the warrant, all those who approved the consent agenda without the warrant?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, so that's unanimous, and can I have a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
A second, okay. Is there, does anyone want to speak to or against it? No? Okay, all in?
I was just going to say, I'm getting reimbursed for my conference, that's why I can't vote for.
Actually, not the one we're voting on, but it's okay.
Sorry.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I think, which is an anticipation that you're highly ethical.
He abstained, yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Old and confused.
Okay.
It's fine.
I'm right there with you.
Okay, moving on.
But you do have to do it again.
Policy, manual update. We have updated A through L. Subcommittee lays on reports, budget.
So, we're having another meeting of budget and CIAA. I apologize to Paul for scheduling it during the school day, we forgot about you because you weren't there at the last meeting.
Yeah, I was in Japan, so you're gonna mess with me in another meeting, you know?
But, but this is, this is, this is the current copy that we're going to go over tomorrow, so we'll talk afterwards to go over the items that are in the plan. Should we do a long-range planning update now, or?
Sure.
There was a long-range planning meeting, was it this week?
Yes, Monday, no, Tuesday.
Tuesday, yes. As a result of some of my advocacy, we increased the revenue assumptions a little bit, $600,000, because our local receipts, primarily excise tax and building inspections, have been coming in much higher than what's in the plan. So that reduces the deficit, but it's still a large deficit, $5 million in 2022, and then it jumps to 17 million in 2023. So their discussions are continuing about what to do and when, and we can talk more about it that, tomorrow at our meeting, I think.
Okay. Whoops. Community relations, anyone speak to it? Nope.
We had our coffee.
Oh, there, that's right.
Right, only one person. Janet said last week she was going to advertise it, and she didn't, and then so I didn't. If they're not advertised, they're just not well-attended, so we have to think about that. One person stopped by who happened to be there to give us some feedback on the building project, and that was it.
Yeah, I recorded.
Facilities.
I met with some parents at Pierce to discuss their playground. They had a question asked about private money being used, and I questioned town council, he gave me an answer, and I passed it back to them.
Okay, great. Policy, we've, anything else?
We did it.
We did it.
We did it.
And I think, wasn't it Bill who started this whole thing?
You're going to blame me?
No, I'm not blaming you.
When was the committee chair previous?
No, I think, I think that, Bill was the one.
Two years ago.
Yeah, I think we owe Bill a thing.
Yeah, Bill was a great person in this, I mean...
Let's not get carried away.
Bill is scurrilous.
That'll take, that's much better.
Okay, legal... Okay. Legal services.
Nothing at this time.
Building Committee, anything else?
No. Next meeting is, as Kathy said, is on Tuesday. And then we have a forum on the 14th of January at 7:00 PM at Town Hall.
Which will focus mostly on cost.
Yes. And so we will be, there have been lots of questions raised about cost, and we'll have answers.
Gibbs?
Nothing.
Any liaison reports, announcements, or future agenda items?
Yes.
Mr. Hayner?
The Bridging Two Communities, the families from Arlington and Boston met at the, on December 1st for an evening of socializing at the 12th Baptist Church. It was well-attended. Over 80 people came. It was really a wonderful time. Metco Directors Conference was on the 13th, I'm sorry, on the 7th. Dr. Deena Simmons was the keynote speaker. Her dynamic approach in sharing her thoughts and ideas of how schools should use the power of emotions to create more compassionate and just society. She met with superintendents and administrators. I wasn't able to attend because I'm not a superintendent. I attended the one on restorative practice and transformation of narrative for Black and Latinos. It was fantastic. There was discussion and some role-playing. And last, about all, EDCO, we discussed blizzard bags and snowy day replacement as an alternative to school learning. Questions and answers and problems that have been encountered and how they've resolved them. Thank you.
Great. Anything, Mr. Carden?
So the Arlington Education Foundation announced their fall grant cycle. It's in your Arlington, so it must be public. So there were $22,000 worth of grants that were awarded. Again, you can look at the article on your Arlington that describes all the wonderful things that they're funding in the district.
Anything else? No. Okay. So at this point, we're going to go into executive session. We will exit only to adjourn. We will, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and/or non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. To conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, collective bargaining may also be conducted. And we'll be discussing Superintendent Bodie's contract. And can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
A second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Hayner?
Aye.
Mr. Carden?
Aye.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Yes.
Carden, and me, I say yes also. And?